Calling the meeting to order at 7:06 PM. As you know this, we have a slightly new format which we have to carry and modify going forward, format, CYS. So we'll see how it goes. Hopefully it makes it a little friendlier, a little less fire squad-ish.
Thanks Jim. We like friendly.
Second order of business, public comment. Any? Doesn't look like it. Great, moving on to the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda which has six items?
Are the minutes of the last meeting on the consent agenda?
The ones she sent late?
The ones she sent late.
I think so.
Could we take those off the consent agenda? The June 26 minutes, I think there was a mistake in them.
This is the June 20th you mean?
June 20th, yeah right, June 20th.
Should we just take them off the...
I don't think so.
No, just a request.
I think just a request.
Okay, so we will take those off for discussion. So a motion to approve the consent agenda with that.
So moved.
Second?
Aye. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
On the June 26 minutes in paragraph, or June 20 minutes, I'm sorry, in paragraph five, there's a statement about, seven lines down, Principal McRae proposed that the Black Lives Matter flag remain up until an equity policy is in place, and then it says motion carried unanimously. I think that's a mistake because then it says Steve moved and there was a motion, it was adopted, and that motion carried unanimously. Mike did not make a motion.
Okay.
That first, the first motion carried unanimously should come out. So that's my motion to amend the June 20th minutes in paragraph five by removing the first motion carried unanimously.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we do a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four, and actually before I start with item number four, I've got one more thing that needs to be copied. Grant or Heather, you can just copy these to the...
Is that the job description?
Just for everyone, yeah, it's the job description. Do you need the charge to be covered too?
Yes.
Okay. Some copies for everybody?
Yeah.
Thank you Grant. Item number four, the facilities discussion including UES playground project. That's you? Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you. So we wanted to give you guys an update and make a recommendation as to how we proceed. Andrew LaRosa, Director of Facilities or Facilities Director, I keep forgetting which goes first, but Facilities Director, wanted to get you guys up to speed where we stand, if you can pass on along. The, as you know, the bid's been back a couple, three, four weeks ago. Engineering construction, ECI, is the parent of there. We have been spending, the playground committee, the design team, and the school administration has been working with ECI in looking for cost savings solutions. We did a first round, got down to about $1.6 million from the original $1.9 plus. That was still not sufficient. In looking at what was available, what was part of the bond, what funds were being brought in from other sources, what other obligations beyond just the construction contract, construction administration, permitting, fees, oversight, which is coming down the pike. It was discussed within the superintendent, the business manager, and myself, that a contract with ECI, about $1.3 million would be palatable, would be where we ought to be. So we did a second round of cost savings options. Throughout the whole process, our goal has been to keep the fundamentals of the playground and the features of the playground intact, looking more finishes, looking at quantity, looking at options to sort of take in existing design that we had and modify. We got to the 1.6 and realized that we were not going to get down to that 1.3 just by sort of reducing, taking granite blocks and turning them into concrete blocks. So we needed to take a dramatic cut at the project to see if we can make that, get to that 1.3. The solution that we proposed was what if we took the lower courtyard, the lower playground, did soil remediation, and turned it back into, for now, a usable play area, put in a playable surface. Right now, we're using sod as a placeholder, whether that's wood chips or sand, or we'll figure that out, and that's the route we go. The idea is that this would allow us to continue, get the project rolling, our window's starting to close up before those kids get there, allow us to get the project going, keep the features that are on the hillside, the really engineering-intensive and earth-moving intensive projects, done in the way the communities expects them to be, just a few tweaks from what the plan is, but the fundamentals of all the structures there. And then looking to enhance the lower playground, the courtyard playground, with funds as they become available, either from fundraising opportunities, from fund balance that may be available to us, from continued cost savings that we find within the project. Our goal is to not just stop when we get to that 1.3, but keep looking. If there's things that made sense to change in the project or take out of the project at 1.6, maybe they still make sense to change a little bit at 1.3 so that we can put that money immediately back into that play area. So our proposal is that you give us the authority to continue to negotiate and work with the playground committee and with the engineers and designers to come up with a contract not to exceed $1.3 million with ECI, with the intent of returning the inner courtyard, taking the features in the inner courtyard, bringing them to the side for a little while while we establish what we can put back into there, with the intent, as we move forward, we will get that, the playground, to where the drawings have them now. Question?
Could I clarify that when you talk about the courtyard, you're talking about right behind the building?
The pre-K, K, and one.
Yeah, okay. So last time around, I did ask if it was possible to know what was cut, because I thought the people in the community who've been working on this for a while would want to know what isn't there.
Absolutely, and that's, we have, we've been working, let's say, through the engineers, so we're not just randomly just say, get this out, get that out. But we had a lot of ideas out there, and a lot of things have been proposed, and our next, if we are charged with moving forward with this, our next meeting will be with the engineer, with the contractor, with the school, the playground committee, and truly, and document altogether exactly what we've decided on and what is staying in. So that will be a process that, quite honestly, we are, we could do that, because we have all the documentation, but it wouldn't mean anything. I think what the community really needs probably is a graphic, here's what it is and here's where we're going. So absolutely, we want to do that, we need to do that, because how these contractors estimate things and how they go through, it's magic what they feel, because they've got so many, we see one thing and they see six layers down, three layers wide, so that will be, that's part of that next step, going through all those cost savings ideas and balancing.
So is your recommend of you approve the ECI bid?
To negotiate, to a bid not to exceed 1.3.
So that would be the motion?
Yeah.
So I'll move that the board approve engineers' construction as the lowest responsible bid for the UES playground project and approve the administration to negotiate a contract at a not-to-exceed amount of 1.3 million?
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
Can I, for pointless record, just focus that, but I think it should be clear that the considerable reduction in work in the courtyard be part of that, just so people know.
Could you just clarify the timeframe again in terms of when?
We, ECI as of a couple weeks ago was ready to mobilize at the end of this month. They, like every other lady that's involved in construction, are getting jobs and so, but as they have not given us the, guys, you've got another week for work, we're putting our equipment out somewhere else. So our, with this guidance from you guys, we will find that out tomorrow. That will be my first, uh, business, when we find out, I'm making one more.
Would that change in what you're doing in the lower playground, will the lower playground be usable in the winter?
That would be, that would be a goal. I can't promise anything, but that would be a goal. That would be a goal.
Michelle?
Today was the last day of the appeal period on the corrective action plan, is that right?
I do not know the answer to that, but it's certainly been out there for more than thirty days ago.
A while, okay. So we're all set with DEC and...
As I understand it, as I understand, none of our environmental engineers or engineering engineers or engineering consultants have said, hey, we're getting back feedback here, so as Jay and I actually had a little sit-down today, impromptu, to go through, not impromptu, a sit-down today to go through permitting and where we stand with all that, but as we...
And that stuff you think is in line for the start?
Yeah, yeah, as we understand it. There's some question of one, outstanding local one, but I, we think that that's...
Take care. And you're at the cap, cap feedback closed, and we haven't heard anything from Johnson Group, so, or anybody, so we're finding the fourth of that.
So final question, which is, at least, probably for me. There was some talk kind of in the community about whether they could do the project in stages, and it sounds like the end result seems to be kind of to do it in stages, to do the upper playground as a stage, and then the, you know, the lower playground part later. Why is that an option now and it seemed not to be an option earlier, or was it not a preferred option earlier?
I can't speak to the process we got here, we've been sort of looking forward, but I suspect that part of that phasing, we really aren't so much phasing the environmental work, we're just phasing the finishes.
Okay.
Think of it that way. We're gonna get, we're gonna do the stormwater, we're gonna get the dirt out of there, we're gonna have a nice clean site that we can then, and fortunately for the, for the courtyard playground, it's flat, it's level, and the structures that we're gonna be putting in there for the kids are not big, monstrous things that need big footings. We can get in there with hand equipment or small equipment to put that stuff in as we need, whereas some of the stuff up on the hill, you need full delivery.
Okay, no, that's, that's a good expression, because I know that question is gonna go.
Yeah, no, we're gonna do the environmental work and the stormwater work.
Ultimately, our approach will be to do it all as one project, but approaching the, you know, the design and the equipment piece for the lower courtyard, you know, has sort of a secondary phase so that we can move forward with the contractor to get the project started.
Because we can't quite afford that playground.
It won't be forgotten. It won't be forgotten.
No, no.
And all that will be left to do is the equipment that will go on that playground.
Equipment left is, we talked about, you know, the equipment, the foundations, the 18 inches of, of...
Wood chips.
Wood chips that need to go underneath the play equipment, but you know, it's, but fundamentally, yeah.
Is that metal play structure that's in that courtyard gonna be reused, or is it going?
The current, Jay's been working with some folks on...
Yeah, so I've been working with the Parks Department, and Alec from the Parks Department has been on the site all week with a group of volunteers that come through every year, and the majority of structures have already been dismantled, and they're gonna finish that up by the end of this week.
I just meant, I just meant, will that still be there for the little kids?
It will not.
Okay, that was my question.
It will not, it's been dismantled, they will remove it all eventually, and it'll, they'll store it over in Hubbard Park, and then look for reuse within the district. So, but no, that won't, that won't stay.
Okay, so it'll be, it'll be a blank, it'll be a blank.
It's used for the backyard.
The courtyard will essentially be a blank space.
Right.
Okay.
We talked about that with Ryan, he had made a very good point of, equipment that's there is meant for small kiddos, and if you have, if we do use it as place space for all the kids, then there's a safety concern between big kids, little kids, that, that kind of idea, which I thought was a pretty good point, so, and it's an added supervision that you don't necessarily need.
Right, it gives us good short-term flexibility.
Yeah, yeah.
Bridget?
This has less to do with the playground than with the next phase of the bond, but I'm not sure when else to raise it, so I'm gonna raise it. The degree to which the cost of the playground seems to have been underestimated is raising concerns for me about the high school project that's in the bond, and whether there are any lessons that we need to learn, and how soon we need to learn them about the bidding on the high school project. Because if we need more money for that project, I think we need to know during the budget process that we need it.
Sure. Well, I was fortunate enough to work for the firm that's designing the, I worked for Black River Design, so I'm marginally familiar with the project of the locker rooms and the auditorium, and I know that originally their cost estimate was based on conversations, real-world conversations, and I know that as part of the process, we will be doing cost estimates through, prior to bid. So we will, at the end of schematic design, we will have a package that we will send to a professional cost estimator to go through and make sure that we make changes before the bid package is put together. We will also put in, within the contract, a couple of, I kinda like your, like the expression that Jay came up with, domino pushers, a couple of big pieces that when we get the contract in front of us, we can say, let's take that out, we'll figure it out later, but let's get, let's get the contract signed. So we'll have those certainly, but we will, we will be doing at least one, possibly two cost estimates on each of those projects.
Great, thank you.
Lisa?
So you had said that the ECI had come to 1.6 million, or do you all have...
On the first round, yeah.
So does that mean that you can estimate that $300,000 will be the cost of the final portion?
No, no, because we continued, because that, that last $300,000 was not just the playground, or not just the courtyard, that was continued throughout the site, reducing planning, changing materials. So that was not, we did, that, that last cost savings round two was not just the inner courtyard, it was throughout the entire project. Yeah. And, and we discussed that, Jay and I discussed that, that we will very soon, just like documenting what those changes are, we do need to go back and look at how much those parts and pieces are going to be, so when funds hopefully become available, we can pick and choose when we say, oh, we found $50,000 somewhere, what can we get with that, and where do we want to go with that. So that, that will be...
Grant's so good at finding $50,000.
And that, and that could be part of finding savings in the upper playground work, it could be, potentially be raising funds that the committee is committed to do, it could come in a lot of different places, but we're very, you know, very cognizant of where we need to be to be able to move forward as a district comfortably with a contract with ECI.
Jay, you wanna come up? So, I mean, post-it done, but...
Absolutely.
If we're not, we're gonna play that deal.
Absolutely, happy to answer any questions, yeah.
How's it going with the neighborhood?
It's going, it's going very well. It's going very well. I've, you know, there's a few really small details that still need to be worked out around the closure of Park Avenue application, that's gonna be with city council, but we're pretty much 95% there, just a couple of small details that have just taken time as we're in summer, so that's, that's going along really well. And I mean, our neighbors, we've been very proactive with engaging with folks in the neighborhood, and all of our response has been really positive, you know, good questions, but, but positive about how do we make this work and move forward, certainly with the city as well, when I was here the last meeting, you know, the same thing too, so that's going along.
And how much pressure will, if you can't have the courtyard space open for recess and playtime, how much pressure will that take off the street? Because obviously it's a much smaller area than, you know, the full two playgrounds, so there'll probably be some pressure to have more space.
I think we'd have to leave that up to the building administrators to, that's how much, how much they need away with.
And how do they schedule recess?
Yeah.
You'd be creative with schedules to have a smaller amount of kids out there, if you can figure out the way to supervise it.
Yeah, and I think, I think our approach, like I alluded to, it needs to be that this is one big project and it will be closed, and we're gonna use Park Avenue as our outdoor space throughout the year, but we're gonna figure out how we're gonna make the budget keys work, you know, throughout the construction process to be able to develop the lower courtyard to whatever it might look like.
Yep.
So it's, I don't think this is a step back in the sense that we're like, oh, now we're just phasing it, and there's upper and lower happening at two different times, but rather we're just, you know, getting to a point where we can move forward with the ECI and get the soil remediation done, get the, you know, get everything started so we, everything, you know, we're working with a real hard deadline for, we're gonna start in terms of safety and progress points and all of that around the school at the end of August. So, you know, we've gotta, you know, get moving with ECI so that we're at that point, and then look at how we can phase in the development of the lower playground and not see this really as a two-step process, but just more as how, it was more in terms of phases.
And how's this gonna integrate, because I know the bond had some other UES projects, how is this gonna integrate with those projects, like with those, the wiring, you know, the elevator and...
The vestibule is probably the most critical, and that is, quite honestly, needs to be a discussion with ECI. So, yeah, we all, designers and engineers, and we all have, oh, they should do it this way, and the contractors say, we do it this way. And so we were, have been talking, as an example, we've been talking about, how are we gonna keep handicap accessibility to the back of the building? You know, we're gonna have to build a scat, you know, or do a walkway, and stay packed, and, and the contractors are, well, we'll probably just leave that concrete and asphalt until next year. It's like, oh, well, yeah, I guess we can do that. Not that that's exactly, you know, that's, that's an idea they have. Now that we, if we can get to this 1.2 with them, the integration of the two will be much smoother.
Okay.
There's still maybe some challenges, if they say, no, we don't want to dig that up, but, because there's some roof drains and things like that that have to tie in. So there is, there's definitely some processing, but that's what these guys do for a living, and they'll figure it out.
Okay. Other questions? All is in favor of Bridget's motion, which I remind folks, is to authorize the administration to negotiate with ECI for a contract not to exceed 1.3 million. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you so much for your work, Jay.
Yeah.
Thank you guys. I'm done here. We know.
Let's begin.
Michelle also acknowledges this is Libby's first board meeting.
Thank you for coming.
Got here 12 hours ago.
So great to have you here, and Andrew, and Ryan, and Mike, we've got all the credit started this week, so...
Yeah, and they've been working very hard.
Yes.
Very hard.
So, next items is the board's summer/fall agenda discussion, and first, a couple of quick summer things. We are kind of borderline on a quorum for the July 18 meeting. Becky can't make it, I think we have Becky, Steve, Peter, and Ryan all can't make it. Can everyone else make it? Because if not, we don't have a quorum, we can cancel.
This is next week, right?
This is next week.
I just deleted it from my calendar today, because I thought it couldn't be real. But I can be there.
And then the second question is, with a short bench, is there enough that we can get done, need to get done?
Well, the question is what's on the agenda?
Yeah, that's...
Well, the question is what should we put on the agenda? Yeah, what, what we kinda need to do is move some board business forward, you know, board structure.
Do we have more policies?
So what we could do is we could kind of use it as a time for a small group to talk about what the retreat would look like, and also, you know, a good number of the superintendent evaluation committee will be there, so we can talk a little more about that, so we could have a short meeting to do those two things.
How are we doing with policies?
So I think we're good on the mandatory policies, is that right?
Looked like, I was having to get that, Google back today.
Yeah, I think...
So maybe would there be any more to approve next time? For example?
Well, it could be...
We can't approve them because then we won't have enough time to warrant an approval.
That's right.
Right. We can't approve them.
But there's a lot of other, like, board policies, I mean, there's no shortage of board policy, things that we could discuss in a small group and try to, you know, make some movement on, not adopt, not adopt or decide anything, but just...
It just seems like we never have enough time, so I...
Exactly.
Planning, planning the retreat seems like a really good idea. You're gonna be here, Jim?
I'm gonna be here.
But, yeah, I would say planning the retreat would be a good use of our time.
Peter?
When you say a short meeting, like, are you thinking, it's a nap? I mean, UES are normally two hours, so you think like an hour meeting?
I, I, I think that's for two hours, because that's our scheduled time, but I, you know, unless we really want to talk retreat details, it's probably something that we could easily do in two hours or less.
Okay, because the only, you know, if, when I heard short meeting, you were thinking it was gonna go an hour, in my mind, it was, well, we just start the next meeting at six, and we'll have four more people, unless it's something time-sensitive, none of which you really, doesn't sound super time-sensitive, but if you're thinking it's gonna be a full two-hour meeting, then, you know, that's great, plus there are two hours of work, and I totally get that, but it seems like we do, we have done a lot of six-to-nine meetings, unpleasant times they agree as they are, but it does allow it to be part of the discussion, and if it's not time-sensitive, but if you think a full two-hour meeting is necessary, then go for it.
Second scheduling, August 1, I cannot make it, and I know it's a difficult meeting for Libby, because there's a retreat down in Southern Vermont, which I think also several other members of the leadership team are gonna be at.
Pete and Steve, not you.
Pete and Steve are, you're gonna be top of Kilimanjaro.
Nine meetings while we're gone. Fourteen, like, nine school board meetings in a few days in our city country.
How would you feel about moving that to the following Wednesday, which is August 1?
I don't care if you move it, but I probably won't be here on the 8th.
Okay.
I think that's okay.
Yeah, the 8th would work for me. I'm fine, either way.
Lisa?
Yeah, I can do that.
Is Ryan back from...
I think he'll be back by then.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's do that as well. Final scheduling item, we discussed, Libby and I discussed perhaps moving the regular timing of this meeting up a bit. How do people feel about that, either six or 6:30, with the idea of trying to go from either six to eight, or 6:30 to 8:30?
I'd love to move it up.
Yeah, so, that'd be great. Totally in favor of that.
Are you gonna do that for the 1 on the 8?
No, we can, we can, we can, we'll look at your face, we can not do it for the 1 on the 8.
Okay, but after that, I'm fine.
Okay.
I think that can be really hard for people to get here at six from work.
You mean like the public?
Are you thinking every meeting starts at six, or just...
Or 6:30 to... I mean, I, I get this, I get, I get it hard from six, but I think most people in Montoya who are gonna come are probably gonna be able to make 6:30.
But what about... But what about, our board members is what Peter's thinking about, I know.
Can you guys, is that tougher for you guys?
It's okay for me, but I think that Ryan, it's, it would be a challenge for him with kids.
Hand up, and kids?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's, um, let's confirm with Ryan. I'll, I'll see if that works for him, and if it, if it does.
Consult with Peter.
Well.
I think that would have to, by the way, I think that would have to be like an action item to do anyway.
I think it would be an action item, yeah.
Because we, we have, we set a meeting.
It would have to be warned, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'd have to, I think it would have to be an official act, but.
Yeah, so, so we have to talk about it again.
I know there are many days, now, don't tutor on me, but there are, you know, once the sports start for kids, there are many days, I book it right from a kid's sport event to here. And I'm not saying I can't miss some sporting event, but it does add, you know, another layer of stress, but that's okay, it's just not gonna be, you know, it, it'll be fine, but it just is a little harder. But, um, one of the nice things about starting at seven, though, I gotta say, by nine, we all wanna be done. Right? No one is, no one is sitting in this chair at eight-fifty-eight thinking, okay, I got another half an hour to go. Like, people are, we are wrapping stuff up.
Right. If we start at six, there's a danger we still go to nine and.
And not, not that Jim isn't amazing at running meetings with designer fist, but.
Well, we often go to ten, though.
Yeah, in the budget session, we go to ten.
Well, that, that's different. I think the budget stuff, we could talk about moving that, but for regular meetings.
Well, we did, last year we were doing budget meetings from six to ten all the time. That was rough.
What's bad?
Because we had all those executive sessions.
We had a lot of executive sessions.
Yeah.
Like, I would say, like.
Almost every meeting.
For a long time, yeah. I know, I roll, let's not go to the dark place.
Seven is really late, like, I, I would vote. Not that we're voting to really consider at least six-thirty, because, I mean, I'd be fine with six, but I know there are challenges either way, but I feel like seven, we just lose all this time, or, I'm just like killing time before the meeting starts, and then, or just working, or just end up working until seven.
I think it sounds like people would like to push up a half hour.
I'm always scrambling to get here at seven.
Did you have a preference in your life, what makes it better for you? Like, earlier or better?
Get home before you're ruined.
I don't know if you have like something with your husband and switching kids, like, you'd just rather get down here, get out.
Yeah.
Well, for you, it's like dead time, not dead.
Yeah, I've been here since seven fifteen this morning, so that's probably not like normal.
I understand. Well, no, we should be considerate of the staff, that should be an important part of our decision, like, we don't wanna like burn out the staff, because.
Well, it's also a little, you know, for instance, if, you know, if you wanna have a principal come and talk about something.
Yes, that's right.
You know, it's easier to have.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
So is the retreat going to be on the fifteenth?
I think we should probably formalize it at fifteen. I have not heard, does that work for you?
I can be there, yes, I'm sorry.
You can be there, okay. Steve didn't get a definite definite, but he said it was the best of all the days. Only what doesn't work for us is Becky, but we can't get you and Libby at the same.
That's okay, that works.
So.
You'll be Libby's first retreat.
And is this a board-only retreat?
Board and superintendent.
Board and superintendent, but not, it's not a administrative.
Not with the whole leadership team.
And, and what was your timeframe for this retreat?
Yeah, I'm curious.
I'm okay, I was thinking at least half a day. Would people rather do nine to one, or, like, noon to four, or one to five?
Would it replace the meeting that we have scheduled for seven PM? Or?
I think it would probably replace the meeting, yes.
Okay, because that's minor detail, but that one's the Roxbury meeting, we have to reconfigure.
We can maybe do the Roxbury meeting the next meeting.
What days are we at Roxbury?
Every fourth meeting.
Every fourth, okay.
What about, would it be possible, I mean, I'm just asking, I mean, I can do whatever, but, like, even, we can start before nine, too. Is that too early for folks, like, eight-thirty, eight-fifteen? I mean, I mean, I'm a.
I'm a.
Jim's giving me the look.
I don't know, summer and like camps and, and that eight to nine hour could be.
Okay.
A joke.
I'm concerned that.
We could, we could do it at eight.
Even eight-thirty, just get, I mean.
Okay, what?
I mean, usually kids drop off camp eight, eight-thirty. Do you have any kids going to camp? My kid, your kid, Becky, no, Tina, no.
Too old.
Too old.
Too old. No kids, right? Yeah, so.
Your kids?
I am not doing drop-offs.
There you go, so.
I don't know, Jim, maybe just give us more of the afternoon.
It's just you, Jim.
Eight-thirty to twelve-thirty?
I don't wanna be impotent, I mean, that's.
I'm concerned that eliminating that board meeting, we're not gonna get done what we need to get done. It seems like we have a lot done now, I appreciate to do. Now, I appreciate that we're gonna set the retreat agenda next time, right? I'm just worried. But you have a better sense than I of what needs to be done, so if we can get it done in that amount of time, great.
I don't think it's enough time.
Thank you.
So, my understanding of the things we need to talk about are.
We talked about, yeah.
The budget process.
Yeah.
How we're gonna adopt mission and values for the new district.
Yeah.
Board, and the board governance process. There may be other things.
Board conduct.
And board conduct.
Yeah, those are.
That's three-half day discussion.
That is not a four-hour discussion.
Oh, boy, yeah.
I'm sorry, it's just not.
There are a lot of little things that may seem little, but for example, this is a Montpelier school emblem.
Yes.
It shouldn't be on the Montpelier-Roxbury public school document, because it's never been discussed. Not that it won't be, but it's never been discussed. If Ryan were here, he'd be pointing that out.
You know, though, Tina, that just, that little logo just appeared, like, two years ago, and the board didn't select it, it just, I don't even know where it came from.
I'm just saying, I know Ryan mentioned it once, that it was thought of as being a Montpelier logo, and so it was worth a discussion. I'm thinking about.
That might be part of our mission and values conversation.
Might be.
But Tina's point was a little different from yours, Bridget. I thi-, I believe, right? Because Tina, you're talking about regular board agenda, meet, like, our regular meetings.
Well, if you cut a meeting out at the end of the day, and you've done a retreat, what was on the regular board agenda? And, and, I don't even know how we're gonna get done the things in the retreat. So I'm going way out here, are you with me? Peter's got both feet on the floor. Suppose we met all day?
I was thinking the same thing.
But not at night?
Eight-thirty to four-thirty? With an hour break?
What meeting did we cancel? I didn't think we canceled.
There's, there's, there's one scheduled for that day.
There's a school board meeting at that, that evening.
That's just a placeholder. Normally, just, just, for what it's worth, normally, we don't meet in the evening in July and August, we just have two retreats.
And, and I would say that this is not normal, because we haven't.
It is not normal, because we just set everything up, yes. Yep.
Yeah, so the things I have, I'd pretty much, you know, governance and structure and board role, clarifying that, board conduct, uh, setting your budget and general schedule, and then mission vision and at least establishing a process for that, if not, just getting the mission vision down. All of which are.
Big topics.
Topics.
I would go for, I, I think it's a full day's worth of work, unless people wanna have two half-day retreats.
I was gonna suggest, I, I personally, I think eight hours, I love y'all, you do great work, and this is super fun stuff, but eight hours is a long time to be locked in. I, I don't know, are we more productive if we did two, is it easier for people to schedule them, to ask two hours?
I think it's, I think it's, I think, I think, well, yes and no.
You might be more productive, but are you gonna find two days that we could do? That's what I'm thinking about.
It's hard enough to come up with this one.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking that, and sometimes, I don't know if you actually are productive when you get two days, because then you kinda have to do like the reset again, and sometimes if you're just locked in a room for eight hours.
Okay.
You get to a point where you just start making decisions and.
Okay. That's true. All right.
We could have a stationary bicycle that we can take turns on or something.
And we could, we could have like a meaningful lunch, where we actually just, you know,
Unplug a little.
Trot outside and unplug for an hour and chat. And kinda have like two, you know, two working things with a meaningful break.
Well, I think we should do the full eight-hour day and grind this out. I mean, we're merging, we have a new superintendent, you know, we owe it to the district to really be on top of this, because at least if something goes sideways, we can say we looked at everything and, like, get, get ahead of this as much as we can. So, I would support that full eight-hour day.
Yeah, and we can, you know, use the time of the eighth and the eighteenth to, you know, set the table and.
Make sure it's as productive as we can.
Make sure it's as productive as possible. So we're good with that?
So.
So, this is what I think I heard. We are going to go a full day, which is eight-thirty to four-thirty, is that what you said?
Yes, eight-thirty to four-thirty.
But we are not having a school board meeting that evening.
Yes, I think that would be overkill.
Yes, I know, but I'm just clarifying, yes.
Yes. We're gonna have a full-day retreat on the fifteenth.
So we'll have, uh, one school board member, meeting in August, which will be on the eighth?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to be clear, because it's a public, we're in a public session, the fifteenth is a school board meeting, and it's a public meeting, so.
Right.
We can do business there as long as it's worn.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so we have, you know, consent agenda items, or, you know, we can spend a few minutes, you know, crossing heads and stuff.
I think someone raised a concern that calling it a retreat suggests that the public can't attend. Not in a meeting, but, which is not true. It's just, it just signals that we're trying to focus our time.
Yeah.
As a group, not that it's not a public meeting.
And Libby and I discussed getting a facilitator for it.
I'm on it.
You're on it?
Mm-hmm.
Because I think it'll also help.
Really?
We've had such bad luck with our facility.
I, I mean, does anyone else feel that, not that we've had bad luck, just that I don't, I feel like we know what we need to do.
Yeah, I.
I feel like we know what we need to do, and sometimes when you have a facilitator, you, the agenda gets crossed with, because there's not enough communication with.
Can't wait.
You end up like pulling out rolls of toilet paper.
I have complete confidence. I have complete confidence in Jim's ability to facilitate the meeting, as we normally do.
We're just, I have a facilitator not for the entire meeting, but for the, talking about board conduct and board roles and responsibilities and lieutenant roles and responsibilities, having somebody facilitate that discussion.
Well.
That, just, that part of it.
I mean, we, but we, we had that facilitated discussion, which was good, but I mean, I feel like we're trying to move beyond the discussion and hash out some policies, get them in place.
I think, I could, I can't comment until we've had the discussion of what's on the agenda and what protocols you might use to pull off the agenda. And, um, if that's working well, we have not sometimes had good luck with our facilitators. So, that doesn't mean there aren't good ones out there, but if, if I had a better idea of it, that would, I'd know whether I'm with.
You know, the woman, the woman who helped us with the budget process, I think she did a good job.
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask, we're sort of bleeding between the, the logistics and the agenda planning, i- if, if we have those materials that she prepared for us to make sure we have those next week, because they were really helpful.
Because we did good work.
We did good work about the budget there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have one, Michelle, still? Any of you would?
I should, I should.
I can't find them.
Libby can still work on it, but that next, then, our next meeting, when we talk about the agenda, then we make a decision.
Yeah, because I think where it'd be most helpful is to have someone who can, you know, come in with some kind of like standard board roles and responsibilities, and come in with maybe, and, and even like a few exercises, like that exercise that, that you had when you went to the, uh, the merger training thing, which I don't know what the name of that, but where you just kinda had people sit down and say, well, is this something the superintendent does or the board does?
Right.
And, and then really get a sense of, you know, where people are on roles and responsibilities. I, I think we could use at least some guidance and some materials on that, because I think if we come in, certainly relying on me, we're, you know, we're gonna be set back on that, but, um, if we can get someone who can come in with like prepared materials and be really focused and ready to hit the ground running and kind of like skip the fluffy stuff and the, uh, or maybe someone who worked with us beforehand and, and maybe not.
I think if you gave us, if you set us up with some homework to read some of the VSBA materials, because I think they lay out pretty clearly those, you know, at least their, their take on those roles and responsibilities.
Yeah, and we did the, we did the sample ones with Steve, we probably still have those, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, that we could go back to those, we have.
I thought we did a good job on those, too. I felt like everybody was pretty much on the same page on the answers to those scenarios.
Yeah, so I think going back and pulling in some of that stuff and, um, because I actually think, I actually think we're on, on some of these issues, if we do homework beforehand, if we get stuff beforehand, then people refresh their memories beforehand. I, I think we actually get through some of the stuff more quickly than.
Another suggestion I'll throw out that we could talk about more next week is that board members could split up responsibility for facilitating different sections of the retreat, which would pull in, take some work off of you, pull in more board members to have done the homework and, you know, be ready to talk about different issues, and then, also means we don't have to listen to the same person the whole day.
Okay.
Although, when we all don't like the facilitator, it at least unites us.
I mean, I think we have a focus and prefer facilitators, some of them are worthwhile, but I, I think a lot of it's gonna be coming in really.
So the governance piece includes the work plan, right? The work plan for the coming year?
So I think that's most of what I have on, um, on summer/fall agenda, so I think it's gonna be a busier summer than usual, but, um, we've got a lot to do. Anything else on that before we move on to policy readings? Yeah, perfect. Item number seven, which is the second reading of the city self-expression policy package. Any discussion, comments on, on that?
I was supposed to do some more work on this. Didn't have time to do very much more work, but what I did has, leads me to suggest that we should bring it back on the agenda next week. Because I did look at the statute and compare them, and there are things in the statute not in the policy, and I'm not really sure why, but one of the things that's in the statute that's not in the policy says that notwithstanding one to six, that students can be taught, like, standard English skills, you know, English language skills. I'm paraphrasing, I, I had a bunch of stuff that I printed out, forgot to print, which is not helpful, but anyway, um, so that, that's in the statute but not in the policy, which suggests that there's a little bit more, um, supervisory authority in the teacher than the policy has.
I don't understand what you're saying, so I can't.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that there's a statute, there's a statute that sets out most of this.
I guess that it doesn't match the statute, but what's.
They don't quite match, there, and one of the provisions that's in the statute that's not in a policy is a, is a provision that says basically, notwithstanding one through six, which sounds like it's an exhaustive limit of what the school can regulate, that, um, students may also be instructed in the English language, basically, like, you know, grammar, writing skills, students can be instructed in English writing skills as part of journalism. And I don't know why that got dropped from the policy, do you see what I mean? It, it would suggest that there could be some role in faculty editing of student-sponsored media for that purpose. But that's not in the policy, although it's in the statute. I'd like to follow up the V S B A and find out why they decided not to put that in the standard policy when it was in the statute.
So you're gonna check on it and we'll bring it back?
Unless people very much wanna vote on it, I, I don't feel that strongly about it, but I did wanna report back.
Should I just get it right, then have to go back and change it and fix it?
Yeah.
No.
Plus, we can't adopt it next week anyway, so.
Are we on to student attendance?
Yes. Fourth reading.
I think this reflects what we discussed at the last meeting.
And I was just curious, is mandatory attendance in truce highlighted for some reason?
I think there's a change. Because it's a change.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
We added the September one cutoff.
Right.
Right, we added the September one cutoff.
Any further changes to student attendance?
We should warn for acceptance.
Yeah, should be warned.
Should be warned.
Should be warned.
Should be warned for acceptance.
Yeah. Let's move it on to item nine. Superintendent Evaluation Committee met, I don't have the exact date, but it was a few years ago, the second, July second. And we, uh, thanks, largely to Becky's great work, uh, put together a, uh, job description for the superintendent, uh, which is in front of you, uh, that we, uh, approved. Uh, and also a charge for the committee, uh, which Bridget put together, uh, and which you see in edited form, and I know you've just got these.
I, okay, so I just wanna say that I edited this properly and printed it off and left it on the printer, so that's why you have, I will circulate the proper one, but fortunately that edited.
It plays an old school.
This is old school, I'm sorry, but I walked out without getting anything off the printer.
So folks, yeah. Most of us, I think, have, were part of the editing here, but if, uh, Michelle, if you want to take a little bit of time to read through this quickly, get super any questions.
Just been my written a couple of times.
Yeah.
Well, are we gonna approve this?
Tonight?
Are we doing anything like?
Well, we can, we're gonna approve it next week if you guys want more time to review it or can approve it tonight.
I, I mean, it's just hard to read this long a document. Like, we can take like a ten minute break, or it just seems weird, like, well, so, like, I, but to really give thoughtful response. I mean, I don't mind, although I trust everyone.
We have time, we should be, even if we don't approve it, should we take a break and let people?
I don't wanna waste everyone's time while I read, no.
I don't.
Me too, I haven't read it, we didn't get it.
No, it's both.
So why don't we do this next time?
And I wanna suggest that on this, I'm not sure how to do this as a placeholder, but on the.
There will only be five of us.
Job description, we have a mission and values that are not the mission and values of this board.
Yes.
And so I'm curious of, do we just leave those headers and take them out? Do we, what is it we do?
It says in here that these are just placeholders until they're updated.
So.
I mean.
Yeah.
That's work to be done, and the job description actually is intended to be updated on a manual basis, it's not a static document, it's a live document. So, um, I mean, we can approve it, approve it today or next week, and six months later, after the first evaluation, it might have to be updated again anyway. So I'm not sure how that works for the board, or in terms of approving the document, I don't know.
Well, I wondered if we should just take out mission and vision at this time, with the rest of the job description, and then add whatever we decide on once we make.
We can do that.
I don't know the process, I, usually you have a mission and vision, I think.
So we can do, we can do one of a couple things, we can either, we're way ahead of schedule, this is the last item on the agenda, it's eight. We can either take five ten minutes now, have people review it and come back and just edit it and get it done. We could delay it for another reading, which.
I would love to have time to read it right now, since I'm sitting here with it, it's only eight o'clock.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Just take a ten minute viewer break and.
Yeah. Under objectives, the second bullet, um, it says the, each individual student, and again in the third bullet, it refers to each individual student. And it, later in the document, it refers to all students, and personally, I'd rather we refer to all students than each individual student. Cause I think in this district, what we've had to weigh individuals against the whole, we've put the weight on the whole. Um, I mean, of course, we want the best for each individual student, but I think the superintendent's responsibility is to the district as a whole.
That's good, yeah.
Good.
Um, and then with the complete, valuable, meaningful, and personally rewarding education, that seems like our values or mission, and seems like this committee probably, I mean, those are all lovely sentiments, but it doesn't seem like this committee should be choosing those.
Where are you, I'm sorry, I don't know where.
I'm still in the second bullet.
The second bullet.
So that all students enrolled in the district.
Oh, complete, valuable, meaningful.
Provided a complete, valuable, meaningful, I don't really know what this means, but I think whatever it means, it's really referring to the values or mission. I mean, I guess if you guys came up with it and thought it was meaningful.
Uh, could we change it to, provide with a reporting of education?
An educate, an education consistent with our values.
Consist, or consistent with our mission, vision, and ends.
Yeah.
With the rewarding, education consistent.
Right, but, so.
With our.
Because otherwise, I just don't think those are very meaning.
They're just kind of heavy words.
Okay, can do that.
Yeah.
Consistent with our mission and vision, or mission.
Values and mission.
Values and mission. Mm-hmm.
Our mission and values.
Our mission and values, yeah, do that.
Does that make sense?
If you provide it.
Well, your values and ends.
Yeah, our ends were more specific to what we wanted for students, but they're not listed here.
But we don't know if we have any.
Yeah, I would say mission and values, cause I think our ends are gonna flow from those.
Okay, mission and values then.
If we have ends.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, on the second page, this C I P talks about increasing student learning and assesses student performance. And it seems like the C I P addresses topics other than just student outcomes, but I don't know whether it addresses them only in order, whether that's always the ultimate objective. But we are only referring to student outcomes in the C I P bullet?
The C I P as written now under E S A for federal funding has to have, it's based around student goals, so.
So that's appropriate then?
Yeah, it would make sense based on what the stipulations we have to live under, if you're referring to the C I P as, as we know it.
Yep. Um, under partnerships, the second bullet, um, the superintendent assists the board and administration in complying with legislative changes, and I would just say complying with or responding to.
I'm sorry, assist the board and the administration.
In complying with or responding to legislative changes? We're not always happy to comply with.
Complying and responding to, okay.
And the last bullet in that section has the, um, sort of defines the role of the superintendent as attending meetings, prepared to act as a resource and an advisor. Uh, earlier in here, we've said that they need to be articulating the vision of the district, and are board meetings an opportunity for the superintendent to articulate that vision? Or are they really just staff support in that context?
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't remember.
I know that was a little, that was often, that has often been tricky for past superintendents to know whether they're here supporting us as leaders, or whether they are also supposed to be leading, like, who's in front in this meeting can be a little tricky. I don't know if we have anything to say about that, but.
I, I've, I view this as the board meeting with the superintendent dividing the staffing from the board meeting rather than this being a superintendent slash board meeting. I mean, you know, clearly, you know, the superintendent in all forms, I think, should be, you know, articulating the vision and, you know, responding consistently with that, but I don't see this as a, I don't see board meetings as the platform for that to happen. Does that make sense?
Good.
I guess I don't see this bullet as summarizing what the superintendent does at board meetings, but as specifying one aspect of what the superintendent does at board meetings.
And it's in terms of developing partnership with the board.
Right, so that's one aspect of what the superintendent has to do at board meetings, which is to be prepared to be a resource, to help develop the agenda, you know, be able to answer questions, help us figure out how to make decisions. But I think other, I mean, all of the other, nearly all of the other bullets could also be part of the role of the superintendent at board meetings, including, for example, during the budget session, articulating the district's vision and values and integrating that with the budget presentation. So I, I think I'm okay with it as it is, but I, that, that's how I read it.
I think I had one more. Uh, under personnel, the last bullet on that same page says that conducts supervision and evaluation for principals and district office leaders. And that, so we have had, um, for the past several years, we've referred to a group of, um, administrators as the leadership team. That was a construct that Brian created somewhat arbitrarily, and even the people who were referred to that way weren't sure who the full cast of those characters was. And so I think it would be great to define, and you, you probably know this already, who the superintendent's direct reports are, and for us to know, and for there to be a list. You know, it's the curriculum and technology, the special services, uh, the three principals, the business manager, but then there's fis, four principals now, yes, business manager, food service director, facilities director. Yeah, cause those three have not always been in that crew.
So maybe we should list them instead of.
So I, that's what I'm suggesting.
Instead of saying district office leaders, list who they are, so everybody would know.
The superintendent directly supervises the food service director?
Has not always been the case, but seems like it should be.
Who else would, who? Good question.
They, they've sort of been a solo operator.
Clarity is a good thing, I am.
I'd have to say. I'll print the titles with Libby and list them out.
Yeah, I mean, do, do I do that, or just wanna say direct reports, because, you know, the direct reports changed, cause I think, you know, I think the point of this bullet is to make sure this, the, the individuals who are directed and supervised by the superintendent get an annual evaluation from the superintendent.
And the assistant principals, are they supervised by the principals?
Yeah.
And Heather and Tracy, are they supervised by you?
Yeah.
So, so maybe even though this says direct reports, sometimes the board might get a list of who the direct reports are, so we'd more than happy to give you a list.
Yeah, I can put that in here.
That would solve the problem, and it doesn't have to be in here, so if it changes, um, we know.
Okay. Thank you.
Oftentimes, no one supervises the food service.
How about superintendent to principals and other direct reports?
Not a good idea.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I had to say. Um, and under qualifications, I don't think master's degree needs two apostrophes.
Sure.
That's extra.
I have two of them, maybe that just been simplified.
There you go.
I have three things, um, I don't feel incredibly strong about all of them, but. Under position objectives, superintendent will be the educational leader to the Monculia Roxbury community, that could be a lot of things to a lot of people's first page. And I think, I don't know if it's worth fleshing that and saying, superintendent as educational leader to the, of the Monculia Roxbury community will be responsible for articulating board policy to the public, interacting with the media, settling conflict. Just so it's clear, this is the person where the buck stops with the community, right? We don't do that stuff, we do not settle conflicts when people are upset. We don't, we don't, we don't do any of that, so it's just, I don't know if we need to say, I mean, educational leaders in broad, but if everyone's happy with it, I'm okay with it too.
I think educational leader is more about the leader of the teachers, is that, am I off on that?
Well, it says educational leader to the Monculia Roxbury community.
I think it's more than that.
Yeah, I, I saw that bullet as less about what you're talking about, which I think is covered by other bullets and more about expecting the superintendent to have a, a leadership voice on education issues in the community. Whereas like running the district is covered by the first three bullets, I don't know, I don't know if that's quite what you're getting at, but.
If folks are happy.
But maybe what you're talking about isn't one of the.
That's right.
Isn't included in the bullets.
If folks feel it is, though, that's okay.
I don't think it is.
I mean, it doesn't need to be, but it is what we ask the superintendent to do, right? Like, the example would be, the end, when the serious summit thing was going down, at the end of the day, that was the superintendent's job to figure out how to resolve and articulate to the community, this is our plan, this is why we do it, this is our plan. And I don't know if we need to put that in writing, maybe it's obvious, I don't wanna.
We could use a fifth bullet potentially, I would agree on the superintendent being.
The outward facing role.
The ultimate decision maker where, I don't know how to describe it, because it's for things to, that have been delegated to the superintendent.
Well, we described the, and this is the second bullet under responsibilities, as the chief executive officer. So what I'm hearing from both of you is that it's not enough, in some way?
It can be fine, I mean, if, I mean, I asked Libby, do you feel like you would need more words there to help you do your job?
I think what you're saying, Peter, I hear what you're saying, and I think that helps define the board's responsibilities to the community more than a job, a piece of the job description. But I can understand why it would go into the job description as, as another place for you all, if you're asked to conflict, do a conflict resolution, to say, that's the responsibility of the superintendent, look, here's our, here's our piece that we've agreed on. So I think it's worthwhile to find, I was just reading through other bullets to see if it fits in other places, and it's not quite as strongly worded as what, how you were wording it, or not quite as clear.
Could you say again what you said, Peter, at the beginning?
The superintendent as the educational leader to the Monculia Roxbury community will be responsible for articulating board policy to the public, the media. will be responsible for articulating board policies to the public, the media, and settling and resolving conflicts. I mean, that last part's a little clunky, but you know, just so they understand, like, this is our person that has to do, has to, has to do these things.
And the policy pieces in the board, Board of Commissioners' policy under the third bullet. However, the, the more conflict resolution thing is in it in places, like interpersonal collaborative skills, but it's soft. It's not quite as direct as what you said.
Wait, where's the, where's the policy piece in?
You look in Board of Commissioners on the third page.
Policy?
Board of Commissioners, yep, which bullet?
The third one, ensures staff and community awareness of all existing and proposed policies, and ensures procedures are created and implemented.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, however, the, the kind of buck stops here, conflict resolution piece, that with the community or members of the community, that's not, that's softened here, and under interpersonal collaborative skills. Conflict resolution is there, but I don't know if it means what we want.
If this makes things murkier, I'm not calling on my sword over this. But if you feel it, it doesn't, if it doesn't help, let's not do it.
I don't think it hurts, so.
I think it hurts, unless, I don't want that to be an exclusive list.
Okay.
I don't like saying, among other things.
Of course. But then it would hurt if it was seen as an exclusive list, if it isn't everything. So, think about it, I don't know.
It might be, a better place might be for, or another place, rather, not better, but another place would be when we talk about board responsibilities versus superintendent responsibilities. So it is down in some sort of formal paper. It's normalized in some way.
Because we, but we, when we work it out there, we might think to then bring it over here. Because I think we do have some language, Monpelia had some language about delegation of authority to this. We should find it.
My second of three is on the third page, under Board of Commissioners' policy. One of the things that happened with the previous superintendent, I think many of us felt, was we did not get timely responses to information we requested at board meetings. And not to be, if this is too micromanaging, I, we don't have to do it, but is there something in there that we articulate that, you know, the board as the supervisor of the superintendent, we should, we, we need to get timely answers, right? I mean, there's what-
That was in, that was in communication and support to the board. We had the whole policy about-
Right. And, and again, you know, in my mind, it can be something like, I simply can't do that, I need two weeks. But many times, we said, oh, I'll get it to you, and then there was, and then nothing happened. The bond was a big example, the early first iteration of the bonds. So, I don't want to, I don't know if we need to do that, but, you know, some reflection that, as, you know, when we need information to make a decision, it has to be delivered in a timely way. Is that too much?
Provide timely responses to board requests.
Thank you. Just so as a box check, thank you.
Yeah.
And then the last one.
Which should always go through the board chair.
Yeah. And then my last one is under fiscal planning and budget management. One of the biggest challenges, I think, we would agree to doing a budget is our very compressed timeframe, between the time when we get rates and numbers, till we have to ship it off to the city council, get it printed. I mean, there is not a lot of margin for error. Every year is incredibly stressful. And it's important that the superintendent create a timeline for meetings and getting information out, and then adhere to it.
Yeah.
Because things get sideways real quick, and we don't have a lot of wiggle room. And I don't know if it's worth putting that out.
Didn't we last year at our retreat?
So none of these bullets specifically say that. I mean, it, it says, ensures the planning and management-
We could just have a bullet that says creates the budget calendar.
Exactly. And adheres to it.
Because didn't we create a whole separate budgeting and fiscal responsibility policy after last year's retreat? We've got a whole document on what that is.
With the schedule. But Brian usually does a really detailed schedule of exactly, you know, from October through January.
Do you want to develop a timeline for implementation or something?
I think the superintendent should be presenting that to the board. So, for example, we as the board can make sure that there's enough, there's enough public meetings that we feel need the needs of the community in that timeline ahead of time.
Right.
Like, if there's only two, that might be bad. If it's a contentious year, we might need four. So, we should, because ultimately, we're responsible, we're accountable to the public. That's it.
So, so part of what we're saying, though, is it-
Jim could find that from last year and get that to Libby, because that needs to-
Budget calendar?
The budget calendar. Because it probably-
It was pretty, might, she might have a different idea for the budget calendar.
Yeah, but it's always helpful to have it starting.
Right. And, and I think to Peter's point, if it's, if we have it early enough, then we can be thinking, if it comes to us at the last minute, we're six steps back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to everyone who did so much hard work, putting that together. That's impressive detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Becky.
Yes, we're supposed to turn the page.
Are there any comments on the charge?
Are we doing the charge, too?
We have, the charge we actually have to adopt at some point. I guess we have to adopt those. But we didn't, not do them tonight, but we do actually have to charge the committee with something. We could do it next week, but this would be Peter's chance to weigh in if you don't like it.
Right, no problems.
Okay.
Should we go ahead and-
I move to approve this charge.
Second. Any discussion? I was in favor.
Aye.
You opposed? Should we approve the job description as amended? Or we want to push that to a-
Do you want another reading?
I'm, I'm gonna ask what you're gonna do about the mission and vision.
Well, I mean, we're not gonna have that till late summer, so I think we can-
No, no, I know, but are you leaving the ones, the Monpelia one in here?
I'm already going to delete it.
You can tell you in the handbook, when I was rewriting the district-wide handbook, that piece, I took that out and said, this is to be determined by the newly merged board.
Can we just put it TDD?
So why can't we do the same thing?
Yes.
Yeah, let's put it TDD.
So, making that amendment, I would make a motion to accept the job.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
I was in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Great. Want to adjourn?
Do you want me to start with website?
Oh, yes, sir.
Yes. It's Spanish.
It did manage. That was surprise on day one for myself and Mike Barry. He's been working tirelessly on this, and I just got a text. I brought my cell phone in here to check. But I just got a text from him today that the homepage will be up by tomorrow of the new website. The man is brilliant, and if you ever see him, pat him on the back. He's made this happen. He's made a lot of work happen in two days' time. We will not have school pages yet, but the homepage will be able to put school calendar, will be able to put latest news on construction and activities and things that are immediate concern.
Current things on the page.
Yeah.
Whoa, Libby, I'm excited.
The high school guidance site to there, because kids are working on their college stuff.
Oh, okay. That's a good thing to, to, I'll text him and say that's important, to get up there. So we'll, we'll, it's not gonna be fully ready to go by tomorrow, but we should be, some, the public will be able to see us by tomorrow. The other thing to, so you're aware, is that Mike has put up Monpelia Roxbury Public Schools' social media accounts. So, follow us on Twitter. Tell everybody we're @MRPSBT for Twitter. And he's also got an Instagram account for us and a Facebook account for us. So, once those are really rocking and rolling, I encourage all of you to share that and make sure that people out there are seeing what we're doing.
It's like it's the 21st century around here.
And will, and will on our new website, you be able to use an iPad to access?
I would make the assumption, yes.
Don't make that assumption. We have not been able to do that on this website.
You do not know, Mr. Michael Bear. Because they will be roving social media feeds on it. There will be calendars parents can, can attach themselves to, so they see things in the school. They'll be, they'll be able to go through the social, the website to get weekly updates from schools and the district.
I would also like the mayor to show that Libby's first meeting ended 25 minutes early. The new regime is off to a fantastic time.
Well, it hasn't ended yet.
Good point.
I will adjourn.
Second. I was in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great.